High God, Holy God, you rule the ways of all people and govern every earthly government. We humbly pray this evening for this council gathered here in Valdez. We thank you for the work they have already done this past year. Even as Solomon prayed for your wisdom to govern all conversations and decisions tonight, so do we. Bless these leaders with your peace so that pride and self-service may disappear and they might be guided with humility, honesty, and respect. Let them not forget the sacrifices made by those who have gone before and those who will come after. Bless our community here in Valdez with the decisions and deliberations of this council. May the commerce of the people of Valdez flourish with your just and fair practices for all residents. May other towns in Burke County look at the work done here tonight as a model for their own governing practices. We thank you for such a beautiful place to live and desire to honor you in all that we do. In your reconciling spirit, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Plagues be lifted by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed. Okay. Council, on your agenda, we're going to move down to, thank you, sir. Item five, open forum and comment. And before we do that, I have a proclamation of appreciation. And if she would, I'll ask Mrs. Diane Cersey to meet me up here. Thank you for coming. And I'll go ahead and tell you, this doesn't come close to how much we appreciate you, Thank you. They use the small font. Okay, you ready? And just so folks you know, I had to twist her arm three times to get her to be here tonight. She's a very humble person. Okay. Proclamation of appreciation for Susan Diane Cersey. Whereas the safety and well-being of Valdez police officers and firefighters are vital to protecting the residents of Valdez, whereas Susan Diane Cersey has shown remarkable generosity and dedication by providing financial support to strengthen police and fire equipment, enhance employee safety, and expand advanced training opportunities. And whereas this commitment has directly improved the readiness and effectiveness of the Valdez Police Department and the Valdez Fire Department, ensuring they are better equipped to protect lives and property, thereby enhancing the safety and well-being of the community. And whereas the investment made by Susan Diane Cersey reflects a deep belief in public safety, community partnership, and the importance of supporting those who dedicate their lives to serving others. And whereas the town of Valdez wishes to recognize Susan Diane Cersey for her leadership, generosity, and lasting contributions to the safety and professional development of its public safety departments. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Valdez Town Council, on behalf of the citizens of Valdez, hereby expresses deepest appreciation to Susan Diane Cersey for her generous contribution and commitment to enhancing public safety in our community. Be it further resolved that the Town Council of the town of Valdez, North Carolina urges all residents to join in recognizing and thanking Suzanne Diane Cersey for this extraordinary commitment to the safety and security of our community, adopted this sixth day of October 2025 by my hand. One of the better parts of being the mayor. Okay. Next council on the agenda is open forum, and we have one person signed up tonight, Mr. McClure. After Gary reads his, or Councilman Ogilvy reads the guidelines for speaking.
The council shall provide at least one period for public comment per month during a regular meeting unless no regular meeting is held that month. Any individual or group who wishes to address the council shall inform the clerk any time prior to start of the meeting and provide their name, address, and subject matter about which they wish to speak. Persons must be present if they wish to address the council. Comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Open forum is not intended to require a council or staff to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the entire council as a whole and not one individual member. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be permitted. Speakers will maintain decorum at all times. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful at all times regardless who occupies the council chairs. These guidelines will help to ensure that a safe and productive meeting is held and that all those wishing to address the council will be afforded the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Hope I don't go over. Talk me down if I do, okay? My name is Rick McClure. I live at 408 Guru Avenue. My topic is facts, okay? One of the facts is that we were able to stop the building of the Fire and Police Department over on Pineberry, which is next door to my house. I'm glad it's going to be downtown now. And after that, I called Clark Irwin to ask him if he'd be interested in buying the Pineberry plant because there's something about maybe tearing it down. So after I talked to him, he seemed to be interested in buying it. And sometime after that, they did buy the Alba plant, the Pineberry plant, for $113,000. They're going to be putting 40 units in that building, starting with four to six at a time. And as they come online, eventually it'll be around $35,000 if they're $200,000 units, for about $35,000 in tax revenue every year for the here-on-after, which if we hadn't done that, we would never got any tax property value out of the Pineberry plant. And I understand tonight, the town of Valdez is going to be voting on changing the zoning ordinance for the rest of that part of the property. And that's around $78,000, I think, a bid on that. Hopefully that we'll be able to build some condos or something like that in that area, which will give the town of Valdez more tax revenue. Also, water and sewer will help pay for that. We've, the town of Valdez has signed a contract with the company to look at four different options on the, on the town for the fire and safety building, maybe one together or two different buildings or what. And so we're waiting on that, those people to finish their study to let us know what's going to happen there. And the town has also, council has also signed a contract to build inflatable over the pool. And they first started out with a permanent park portion, but that just kind of went out of hand. It got to almost around $2 million. So we're able to do the inflatable pool at a quite reduced rate, able to use the $500,000 grant for that. So it ended up costing the town about close to $300,000 to build inflatable. And that'll also be available, I think, for this winter, for people who swim. And also with no cover, the people can have sunbathing during the summer, which probably will help out the other one. The permanent cover, you wouldn't, you couldn't sunbathe there. The council also changed a grant that was given to the town for a sidewalk. It was $950,000, but that was going out of town. And we're able to move that around to a sidewalk that's in town, will go from the community center, well, from here to the community center. And maybe one of these days, we can get something over on Carolina so people can walk from out of town, out in our area over there, and walk right into town, so we wouldn't have to walk on the road. The town citizens kind of got in a revolt a month or so ago when the planning board decided to put 40 more units of low-rent housing in the town of Valdez after we did that study two years ago, saying that we didn't want any more low-rent housing. So I'm not sure what the planning board found out when, when that study went on, when we said we didn't want any more. In the town, the towns are, I've already talked about towns contracted. So the results of what I'm saying is, we've done a lot in two years. We've saved $1.2 million by not building the permanent structure over the town. We've saved money by not building the fire department and police department on Pineberry, which would have never got any revenue out of that. And so I think that the council has done a good job. One of the other things we did was we lowered the rate to 51.5 to 41.5. And thank you, and God bless.
Okay, counsel, moving on to item six, consent agenda. You have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I so move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes and raise your right hand.
Yes.
And I see none opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, new business. A, Public Hearing Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization, CDBGNR Funding for Berrytown Water Project. And Mr. Ben Willis is with us from COGS. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel, for having us. You guys, everybody here is very familiar with the Berrytown project that is moving along.
Let me do something first.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as I said, counsel, this first item of new business will require a public hearing for the Berrytown Water Project. Since this is a public hearing, I will now declare the public hearing open. And I ask you, sir, to make your presentation, introduce the hearing, and provide the information.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you. Everybody is familiar with the Berrytown project that we've been working on here for the, gosh, the past year or so. This is actually the third public hearing. This is actually a good public hearing. This, this is the third public hearing for the CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization grant. This grant covers water line and service line connections to low and modern income homes in the Berrytown CCC community. Valdez initially applied for $800,000 for this project, which was presented at the second public hearing. However, due to cost increases, the application budget was amended to $1 million and awarded at that amount. That public hearing, this public hearing is to notify the public of the additional $200,000 award. That is all I have to say.
Counsel, you have questions? Hearing none. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak for or against this action? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak? Hearing none. I now declare the public hearing closed. And counsel, I'll entertain a motion. Or actually, there's no action required on this. The action-related item is item B, Adoption of Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure, CDBGNR Documents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are the exact same plans that were adopted several months ago for the CDBGI or Infrastructure Grant through North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, but modified to reflect the contact information and reference to North Carolina Department of Commerce. There are no policy changes. This is basically just formality to make sure that the names are correct. So basically, we have two different pots of money. Both are from Community Development Block Grant. One is the Neighborhood Revitalization, and the other is infrastructure. And the one comes out of Commerce, and the one comes out of the EQ. And this is basically making sure that the language matches each one of the grants.
Okay. Questions, counsel? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Community Development Block Grant Infrastructure Documents.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Seeing none opposed. Okay, counsel, item C, Approval of Ordinance Direct Enclosure of Property Deemed Imminent Welcome back.
Good evening. So on 7/11/25, we issued a notice of violation to the property at 508 Pineberry for the property owner, Mrs. Bolick, to vacate the property because she was living there in a tent without any sanitary facilities or any kind of safe habitation. Held a hearing on 7/23 at the property where I went to conduct our minimum housing hearing. I also was accompanied by some of the homeless response team members, take down some more data from her, and try to help her find a place to live. On the 25th of July, issued a order to vacate the property, cease living in the tent as she is, with a deadline of September the 25th of 2025. And once that deadline expired, we have an ordinance before you to vacate and close the property. This will entail placarding the property, removing the tent if necessary. I do believe that she will take the tent down on her own because she doesn't want to lose it if we take it down.
Say that again, just what you said.
I believe that she'll take the tent down on her own.
Okay.
Because if we have to do it, we'll remove it, and I want her to be able to keep it. I don't want to take her property if we can keep from that. It would be my recommendation, obviously, to pass the ordinance to come up with a set deadline for her to leave the property from this point forward, to give her time to move her stuff if necessary, and to allow her to maintain the property via mowing or whatever needs to be done, just in case. I don't want to have to hit her with other nuisance issues after this.
Okay. Questions, counsel?
You told us that she received a voucher from the homeless task force, is that correct?
She has a back-to-home voucher. I have some homeless response team members here, if you would like for them to explain everything.
Yes, I would.
So, again, Ben Willis, Western Piedmont Council Government's one of, I'm the director for community and economic development. You got to see one side of my hat, which was economic development, which we just did. Now you get to see the community side. So I'm the director of the homelessness response team, and we've been very much engaged, as you all know, with the town of Valdez since the formation of the homelessness response team. And I wanted to introduce you all to Amber Bradford, who's the new manager of the homelessness response team, who's been involved with this case. So I'm going to let Amber kind of address the issues and what we've been dealing with. Thank you.
Hello. How are you guys?
Good.
Your question?
Yes. Was she issued a voucher, and can you tell us about that?
So I will tell you, there are some things that I can share, and there's some things that I can't share.
Okay.
Okay? The nature of what we've been doing with the homeless response team, we have been working with her since July. Actually, we received a referral from Kirk. He's been working in tandem with our team to be able to support her where she's at. She has received, it's not a voucher, that is, was misprinted. It's not a voucher, but it's a program that she is eligible for because she is literally homeless. It is a back-at-home referral. So she does have that opportunity available to her.
So what would this entail for her?
So the voucher, well, let me back up. It's not a voucher. So the program, it works like a supportive housing program. It's a 24-month program, and then they work to support her with additional permanent supportive housing opportunities after, after that period has ended. So that's case management, that's helping her find a place to go, but she has to do some legwork to do those things as well.
Has, has she done any legwork?
I will say that she has some barriers in front of her. She is working through some of those barriers. I can't speak to all of the things that she is doing and what she is up against, but she has made connections with us to be able to support those things.
Anyone else?
If the council approves this ordinance, how long would she have to vacate the property? Would it need to be tomorrow or sometime in the near future?
That date is up to you.
That's up, we can set that date?
Yep, we left that blank on the ordinance. We can fill it in. You can give her 10 days, you can give her till the end of the month, whatever is your pleasure.
All right. Another question I have, kind of related to that, is assuming this is going to take Let me ask, the other question I should ask first. How long has it been since that house burned down and she's been without a house?
It's been two years.
Just two years? Okay. And I think somebody died in that fire as well, so that, that probably has nothing to do with this. But at any rate, so for two years, she's been living in these conditions most of the time. I think she's been other places part of the time. But at any rate, what I'm getting to is, is there some way, if we gave her another 10 days, or 15 days, or 30 days, is there some way to provide her with a portage on, or maybe to take care of the sanitation problem that I know some of the neighbors are very concerned about? I don't know what else she would need, get bottled water, I guess, but is there anything we can do to ameliorate just whatever the alternative is? I don't even know what the alternative is, frankly.
So a portage on is kicking the can down the road. I'm not opposed to giving her more time, to allow her more time to finish up with her roadblocks and get closer to housing. But the issue is, it's not just sanitation, it's, she's living there in a tent. Anything could happen. It's not safe. It's open invitation to theft or somebody to come through the property and do something. Nothing like that's happened yet. So there's multiple reasons that she should move on and try to find better housing. This may, in fact, help her get more housing through some kind of an emergency response to her being put off the property now. There's potential for it to cause for some kind of emergency action through the housing issues. But if the council wants to give her a portage on, it's entirely up to you guys, too.
Is, is there any other individual involved there, or is it just her?
It is her and her 25-year-old son and two dogs. And in answer to your question about the two years she was in and out of campers from time to time on the property, she had a camper there at one time also. She's been in the tent, I believe, since the spring.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know if this is for Mr. Willis or if it's for our attorney, but in the ordinance, under section six, it says that there's a 30-day period there. So if we were to adopt this tonight, that, that's the 30 days. I mean, is that the time period that's set?
Yeah, I was just now looking at that. So that time comes from chapter 160D, and essentially, that's the time period within, that has to elapse before we could file a summary adjecment to have her removed by the court from the property. So that 30-day period is in there for that reason.
Look, to go back to his answer, I think, was, if we pass the ordinance tonight, she would need to move tomorrow at the earliest, or any other date that we might set. Is that right?
Yeah, you can set the date, you just can't enforce it for a period of 30 days.
We can't enforce it. All right, so if we set the date for tomorrow, she would still have 30 days to find a place.
I think that's the main thing that I've heard today. This has been a very, I guess, since the, the article came out, people have been calling today about it. Their one concern was making sure it was a constitutional, like, are we violating her constitutional rights? We, because it's an ordinance in the town, I know that's not the case, but that's immediately where people go to with that. Another question I got, will she lose her property? Or does she still pay taxes on it, but then she can move back to it if the things are corrected? How does that?
Yeah, she won't lose her property.
She won't, okay. So it's still in her name, everything, okay.
Anyone else?
And I will say, I have had concerns from neighbors. I had, I have had neighbors call me with concerns about the property.
I've had most of the calls.
Yeah, I've been hearing complaints for, I guess, two years.
I was called about a year ago.
Okay. Any more questions, counsel? If not, counsel? No, ma'am. I'm sorry. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to pass the ordinance to vacate and close the property, posting the property and enforcing the trespass clause of the ordinance in accordance with the North Carolina General Statutes.
I so move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Those in...
I'm sorry to interject. Do we need a date in that motion, Tim?
I think the, the way the resolution is drafted now is we have 30 days. If they want to change that, then...
Okay.
Now, let me ask this. If we set the date for tomorrow, she still has 30 days, counsel. So I personally would like to see you set a date in, in the, in the motion. Because if not, if this, I think it'll continue to drag out further.
I would like to make it effective. If, if this, we heard that she would still have 30 days to find another place, I would offer a minor amendment to my motion that, effective immediately.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your work on that. Okay. Next item, D, Capital Project Ordinance Utilities Line Replacement, fiscal year 2526. Mr. Wykel?
Good evening, mayor and counsel. All right, so making some positive progress on this. This is setting up a project ordinance. If you recall back in the budgeting process, we included appropriations within the utility fund for improvements to water and sewer to several different areas in town, specifically Rotary Street North, Rotary Street South, Jefferson Avenue, and Curville Street. So we're looking at utility projects for these as a total package. And what we're doing is setting up a project ordinance so that we can begin the, we've already began the engineering work, but this will get the engineering work continuing till we get to a bid phase. And then once we get to the bid phase, we'll know what the construction costs are, and then modify that project ordinance from there. But this is the first step, is to get this one set up.
Okay. Questions, counsel? Okay, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the capital project ordinance for the Rotary, Jefferson, and Curvale area utility line replacements while reserving future amendment authority to incorporate actual construction costs.
I make a motion, we adopt the capital ordinance project for the utility line in replacement for Rotary Street South, Jefferson Avenue North, and Curvale Street North, as specified.
Second, please?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you, both. Item D, Capital Project Ordinance, Water Plant Bulk Chemical Facility Improvements.
All right, so this is setting up another project ordinance just for engineering work only. And the reason why this is on here is, as you're aware, we have the big water plant upgrades project that we're currently in the process of designing. water plant upgrades project that we're currently in the process of designing. And we'll be going out for bids probably in a couple of months for that project. So, the idea with this, setting up this separate co- project here, is it's a project that was going to be proposed two years from now. But we think if we can include it with the bid package for the big plant upgrade project, that we might get better, uh, costs for this type of work. So, we want to go ahead and get that design work done, whether, whether it's affordable in the project that's coming up that we're bidding. If not, we'll still have the design work for future years when we need to do this. So, this is actually for the bulk chemical tanks at the water plant, replacing those. But this is, just gets us set up so we can get, get that design work done and include it with that bid.
Okay. Questions, council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the project ordinance to proceed with design and cost estimating services, allowing the water plant bulk chemical facility improvements to be integrated into the water treatment plant upgrade project.
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signal five, saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Bo. Item F, year-to-date financial results. Sir?
All right, so in the packet was the, uh, financial statements, which would be for, uh, the first three months of the fiscal year, July, August, and September. Um, we're still early in the year, so I don't have anything significant to point out, but I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions, council?
No questions. I'd just like to compliment, uh, Mr. Wykel on the great amount of detail that he provided, and the effort to get the, uh, September thirty results wrapped up into this report. Uh, I guess the only suggestion I might have for a little relief in the future is, I think there's, uh, some trial balance detail and other things like that, that you might not have to provide to the council, because I don't know how many people went through that item by item. On the other hand, though, if you went through that item by item with, not me, but the new council, I, and, and not, not necessarily in a public meeting, but that would be a tremendous educational process for our financial system to set up. So, that was, that was great information, but, uh, I wouldn't want to subject the council to a quiz on how many people read it and how much they got out of it.
Sure. Anybody that, uh, wants to meet with me, one or more, and I'm happy to go over this stuff with them, too.
Anyone else? Item G, clarification of November and December council meetings.
We discussed this, uh, last week pretty thoroughly, and, uh, we have, uh, reviewed, uh, proposed motion that the attorney has reviewed. So I therefore move to resolve that the organizational meeting of the town council for the town of Valdez has been set and shall take place on November seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, if the Burke County Board of Elections has certified the twenty-twenty-five election results by that date, or if not, on the first regular meeting in December, after the results of the municipal election have been certified.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Further discussion?
Uh, my comment on that is that, uh, it clarifies that, when we set the calendar, we indicated that we would square in the new, uh, elects on November seventeen. Uh, and that was important because, two years ago, the new elects were left in the dark after the election. So this would clarify that they'll be sworn in about two weeks after, well, less than two weeks after the election. Uh, but, the, uh, North Carolina General Statute One Hundred and Sixty-eight dash sixty-eight specifies that, uh, the council may fix the date and time of its organizational meeting, at which the newly-elected mayor and council shall qualify by taking oath, and at which meeting, council shall elect from among its members a mayor pro temp to serve at the pleasure of the council. In other words, uh, there are two entities, two, two items here. One is swearing in the new elects, the second one is the organizational meeting. This motion simply combines those and makes it clear to everybody, if the Burke County Board of Elections gets the results certified by November seventeenth, they usually do it within a week or ten days at the most, uh, then the organizational meeting and the swearing-in will take place at the next regular, scheduled regular meeting of the council, which is November seventeen.
Anyone else? Okay, I have a motion and second. Those in favor, signify by saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Okay, clarification of terms.
Oh, that's, I think that's, that's, that was covered by the motion.
All right. Relevance of the November tenth meeting, pre-agenda meeting?
That was a question that was posed at the pre-agenda meeting. Uh, since, assumingly, the new council will be, will be seated on November seventeenth, and it will be their agenda, do we want to do the pre-agenda meeting on November tenth?
I would make a motion to change the calendar and remove the pre-agenda meeting for November tenth.
Move it to when now?
Remove it from the calendar, not have it, let the town manager set the agenda for November seventeenth.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Questions, discussion? Those in favor, signal, go ahead.
As I say, I'm all for that. That cuts out one of my last two obligations. Thank you.
Those in favor, signal five, saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Item H, engagement of financial analysis and modeling consultant. Who is doing that one?
I'll do that again. Uh, again, we discussed this, uh, uh, you know, in depth, ac- actually at the September second meeting, again, last week. And it seemed like we had it all resolved, but it was not clear to, I don't, not clear to me, I don't know by anybody else, that everybody was on the same page. The only three people talking about it were, um, our town manager, Mr. Herms, our, our, uh, assistant town manager and finance director, uh, Mr. Wykel, and me. But, uh, at any rate, to just make sure we're all on the same page, I move to resolve that the organizational, oh, is that right? Oh, no, okay. I'm reading on, okay. I move to direct the town manager and staff to ensure that all relevant, immediate, near-term, and long-term financial data applicable to each option are available when the Valdez Town Council decides to proceed with Phase Two of the contract with D.R. Reynolds by coordinating the coordination of D.R. Reynolds' recommendations with in-depth financial analysis and modeling of all factors, using the Trion Financial Advisors model and the assistance that the town has acquired for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
And again, I think the last thing we heard last week at the pre-agenda meeting from Mr. Wykel was that, uh, he'd gone back to Trion Financial, uh, and this model that was initially intended for developing future budgets could be adapted for, uh, a project evaluation. And I think they even offered to come and help, uh, implement it and present it. So, uh, just, uh, if, if that's the correct understanding, this will just put it in black and white.
Anyone else?
Um, Mr. Wykel, is the twenty-five thousand dollars that we're paying to Trion Financial, it will cover this, too?
Yes, it'll be, yeah.
Okay, it would cover it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an additional cost?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I guess the thing that I would have to question or ask is, you know, we've got four options out there. Are the modeling and the financial going to be on all four of these options, or they go, just going to be on the ones that D.R. Reynolds said that we could use? There may be one or two of those options that we do not use, uh, at all. And I don't see spending any money or taking any time to go over all four, if two of the four cannot be used.
Sure.
I think, to clear everything up, I think everybody's on the same page. We're going to use the financial model on any viable options. If they, if they come back and one's not viable for one reason or another, there's no sense in doing the model on that one. But if there's three that's viable, or two that's viable, we will do the modeling on those, on those options.
Okay, so, if three are viable, you do the modeling on those, is that correct?
Uh-
If two are viable, you do the modeling on those. If they come back and say two are not feasible to use, then there's no use to do the modeling on those, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, just to expand on that, I mean, it sounds like we understand that we have the modeling available. We know we're going to talk about whatever decisions are brought forward. We're not going to make a knee-jerk decision without analyzing any of this. So I guess that's where I'm to the point of, why do we need a motion? Why does this council need to make any plan? I mean, I think that's for the new council to make decisions upon. We're going to have people at the table that can hear the information, that are capable of making decisions, and we can do it that way. That's why I just don't see the need for this council to put something in place.
The RFQ and previous discussion from the September three meeting indicated that the R. Reynolds would submit recommendations regarding four options, and the council would make the decision on those four, and immediately go into Phase Two of the contract. That's what, that's where we were. This doesn't cost any money. This clarifies what I think we got to through, after discussing it in two previous meetings. And some more work is being done, and has to be done, in order to get this, to get, uh, Trion Financial Advisors up to speed so that we can look at all these numbers at one time, right? They, they're working on it, they need to do some more work on it. So, this motion would simply confirm what's going on, and, uh, have them get the, get that modeling ready to use when D.R. Reynolds comes back with her recommendations, and not wait until another two or three months to, until D.R. Reynolds gets done and say, oh, yeah, okay, now we've got to go start on a model. So this just, this just clarifies it. Uh, does it create any problems? I don't know, I haven't heard of any problems. I mean, we've been talking about it, this is the third time we've talked about it, nobody had anything to say about it, except the three of us for the last two times. So, uh, let's just, you know, I recommend we just pass this, move on, and make sure, and we'll all know, the whole citizens will know, people who are watching tonight, know that the council's going to look at whatever options D.R. Reynolds comes back, comes back with, plus the two or three or four million dollars of other, uh, future or near-term and long-term expenses associated with those options. If they come back with one of those. If they don't, they don't do it. It's that simple?
I just look at it this way, it doesn't cost, cost any extra money. I, for one, want, want, want as much information as possible. I think that anyone who has voted in is going to want as much information as possible. That's all I see this as being. So if it doesn't cost any money, it doesn't hurt anything to have more knowledge. Let's go for it. So, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Ray, could we do a roll, roll call vote on this one, please?
Okay. Okay. Start with, uh, Councilwoman Long.
Counsel, please.
With me? Uh, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item I, consideration of personnel policy and training recommendations by town manager after five months on the job.
Uh, yes. Uh, this right here is, uh, I'm going to try to do one and two and three all together. Uh, I, uh, one, two, and three. We have contracted with, uh, David Hill of Piedmont, uh, Consulting, to come in and do a pay classification study, as well as look over some of our personnel, uh, policies and, uh, recommend changes. Uh, several of the things that's included in this, he will be looking at. And at that point, we'll bring it back to the elected body for a vote on, um, on the changes to the personnel policy as well as the pay study.
Questions, council?
Uh, Manager Herms, who, who are you looking to employ to do this? Have you got that far yet?
Yes, we've already entered into a contract with, uh, his name's David Hill. He does probably-
David Hill?
Yes, he does probably eighty percent of this region's, uh, uh, pay study and classification studies. He's very well knowledgeable. He's got a long history of human resources.
Okay, anyone else? Item J.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Herms, did you say a timeframe? I, if I, if you did, I missed it.
So I'm going to look at, uh, Jessica, I believe the forms from the employees are due next week, and then probably thirty days for him to review them. Um, we've already got some preliminary data, but it's very preliminary, it's very raw. And then probably another four to six weeks for him to review the personnel policy. I hope to bring something, uh, back to the elected body, probably the January, February timeframe, to be implemented, uh, July one. As far as, uh, pay goes, the personnel can be implemented immediately.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Item J, updates on ongoing or pending council resolutions.
All right, if it's, if it pleases the council, I'm just going to go through these down to, uh, uh, five, and then I'm going to turn it over. I believe Mr. Harvey has a PowerPoint for, uh, six and seven. Uh, so, the latest on the DOT, uh, research, since we have been in contact with them, they're still, uh, behind the eight ball from Helene. Uh, what we have looked at is an alternative of trying to group together with other municipalities in the area to go out for bid. We hope to have an answer, uh, probably in the, uh, uh, December timeframe for a plan for the summer paving. Uh, we do have a list of, uh, roads that, um, for one reason or another, need to, need a little bit of attention beforehand, and we're going to, uh, start on those, but they're very minimal. We're not paving large sections, it's more of a, a patching than anything. Um, the Lenore inter, uh, interconnect connection, Lenore's in the process of getting all the easements that's needed for the line, as well as working with Duke and FERC, uh, to approve the crossing of the lake. Uh, at this point, um, all the, well, that's, that's, uh, number two and number three. Uh, the inner, the interconnect agreement has already been signed, executed, and once the line's installed, can start day one. Uh, the status of Whore Creek Restoration Path Project, um, that is, uh... I got my notes here. I'm sorry. Can't read anything anymore.
Take, take my little phone.
So, uh, we've met with DOT, we have, um, and other stakeholders. Uh, DOT seems to be willing to permit, uh, soft surfacing trails within their right-of-way. Uh, the site survey, field work has been completed. The environmental, water resources, and threatening endangered species surveys for the entire right has also been completed. Uh, we're currently coordinating with Duke Energy for pole modification and relocation. And once, uh, the, that is completed, um, and grading is for, is, uh, more formally established steam, uh, steam, stream, modeling can then be evaluated in the area for stream improvement that is needed as part of the project. All right, uh, now we're down to mobile food service ordinance. That is currently with the board, the, uh, planning board, uh, the planning board. Uh, they've went over a couple of different, uh, meetings. Uh, once they have made their recommendation, it will be brought back before this board or the elected bodies for a formal vote, uh, to approve it or modify their recommendation. And I do know they've had a lot of discussion on that. Um, the pool cover, uh, and ADA compliance period, uh, the ADA handicap ramps, they're actually putting the, the, the rails up today. Uh, hopefully that will be completed. Uh, if it's not already completed, it'll be completed, uh, tomorrow. Uh, the pool dome, uh, as I stated at the, uh, pre-agenda meeting, we- Uh, the pool dome, uh, as I stated at the, uh, pre-agenda meeting, we have ran into a little bit of issues. Uh, the plans are extremely old, the concrete on the plans isn't as thick as it is in, out there. So we're looking at alternatives to that. We've also, uh, ran into a small electrical issue, uh, which I will, uh, say, uh, we, uh, was able to work through and cut, uh, I want to say about twenty some thousand dollars off of that change order, is that right? Beau knew somebody, so, uh, we had a, we got a third estimate and it saved the town about twenty grand. Uh, once we get all that wrapped up into the incomplete, uh, change order, depending on the amount, we may need to come back before the board for a budget amendment. If so, uh, we don't anticipate it to be very much. Most likely, at this time, we're anticipating that we may be able to absorb it within the project itself and no, no council action will be needed.
What's the best guess date of when the, when it will be open?
So, um, we were shooting, we were shooting for October, but it's rained. It, it's like every time they show up, it rains. So at this point in time, I don't have a firm date. Uh, we're still trying to shoot for sometime in October, but, um, realistically, they, we may not meet that date. This depends on what we run into with the items that I mentioned earlier. I know Beau's been talking with the contractors more than I have, uh, because it's dealing with money. But at that time, between the weather and the couple incidents that we ran into, it's been delayed a few weeks.
Will the, uh, if it gets delayed a little bit, will the East Burke High School and Drawn High School swim team still be able, will still work with our schedule? They'll be able to use it this year, this winter?
I, I can't say that for certain, it just depends on how long it takes the construction and what other issues we run into. Whenever we're dealing with something, the pool is extremely old and it, and when we start dealing with something like that, uh, anytime you deal with construction, you're going to run into unforeseen things. But, uh, when you're dealing with, uh, depth of concrete issues and electrical issues and weather has not been participating. Uh, we are hoping to have a, uh, firm date sometime next week and we will, uh, see it to council. And, and if so, uh, we will also be updating the public once we get firmer information via social media and the website.
Yeah, well, I'm school, I'm concerned about the school system.
Yeah, I understand.
They had, they've had the last two years, they've had to go out and find other facilities. I think they're counting on ours this year.
Yeah, we're, again, we're trying to do it as fast as we can, it's just the weather's not been cooperating first and foremost. And the second thing, we have run into some issues that we weren't anticipating.
Council, any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
Item J six, public safety facility options progress and schedule.
I don't have anything on that.
Okay.
Except, I mean, you might fall sentence again on what you think the schedule is when they'll come back with recommendations that the staff can, uh, start to work on and analyze for the council.
Yeah, so, um, the hope is to have something, uh, late October, early Feb, uh, February, early November for staff's review, uh, for the, uh, basically me, Beau and, uh, his review to look at it. And then if, if we are in agreement with everything that, you know, there's no issues, uh, then we would forward it on to the elected body. Most likely, depending on the new councils, uh, I would assume that they'd want it in the December meeting. Give them, you know, a couple of weeks to overlook it and then vote on it in December to start, uh, how does, the, how to continue on with the project without delay.
Council, any questions? Thank you, sir. Design, design build contractor wall estimates per ten, seven, twenty-four council resolution.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we, uh, the council went into quite a lot of detail about this last October when it passed this resolution, but, in, in short, what it is, is that the, uh, when the design build contractor was, uh, located, which is D.R. Reynolds now, that, uh, we'd get estimates on a couple of mo- minor modifications to the building. And I hate to ask this, but I have put together a PowerPoint presentation of about ten minutes, if I can get through it in ten minutes, that I'd like to go through with, which I think simplifies this request, but also has some benefits that we haven't talked about before. So would that be all right if I go down there and make this presentation? Thank you, and I'm, I gotta pause that in advance, I can't get up and down from there as fast as you can, Mr. Mayor, but I'll do it as fast as I can.
You can probably read smaller font than I can, but.
Okay, Jessica, I'll get this thing loaded up for me, I'm not too familiar with this particular device, but I'll see if I can hit the right button, I think I can. I'm drawing now on my day job for about twenty-five years, two different day jobs really. In each case, I was challenged with, uh, adapting an old building, an old commercial building, uh, actually, old commercial buildings of forty and fifty thousand square feet to current needs. Uh, this building has had, this had a lot of, this was a, a lot of bad design features in this building to start with. And the town has already spent quite a bit on some maintenance, trying to repair some of those. But, uh, what I have to suggest tonight just deals with two issues and pretty quickly and pretty simply, I think. That's oversized offices and then there's a dangerous through traffic situation. On the offices, uh, where typical commercial design allocates a hundred and fifty square feet per employee, uh, in this office, we have four administrators occupying offices in front of the building, uh, occupying twenty-two hundred square feet, which averages out to five hundred and fifty square feet per, per employee. We can't change that, except, uh, pretty easily change the biggest one, which is the planning office. It's over eight hundred square feet of space, it's the second largest room in this building, second only to these council chambers. It's even larger than the community fair's room across the lobby. Here you see it, it's right across from the council chambers, right across the hall there. The council has used one end of it, it's set up, it's got the planning officer's desk at the end where it says twenty-four feet. And at the other end, there's a, a conference table, extra chairs, large screen TV, computer. The council's used it for interviews, in-person interviews, Zoom interviews, training and some other special things where they needed a little more space and they needed the technology. So it's a very, and I, and I assume the staff uses it too. But the hooker is, if there's somebody in the planning office, and there's been somebody in the planning office one or two days a week for the last ten years, that conference room is, is, uh, off, it can't be used by anybody else. Whoops, oh, how do I, oh, I see. So the simple solution, which should be covered by that, uh, resolution we passed last October, is put a wall right across the center of that, separate the office from the conference part. And it already, it was probably designed as two offices to start with. It has separate entrances, it has separate light controls, so that's a, that's a pretty simple, uh, change. Shouldn't cost very much, a general contractor out of it will put that in on two or three days over a weekend. And it would make a dedicated conference room for the council to use for closed sessions and other things. Uh, the planning board uses it now, uh, but, uh, other staff could use it, police department could use it. So that's, uh, that's almost a good enough rea, I think that's a good enough reason to invest in that wall. But there's another very important reason for it. If we did that, then by putting two secure locks right up here on this door, the, where the council goes out for closed sessions and it goes outside, on the outside, that could be turned over to the police department to use as a secured entrance and, uh, to interview people they pick up. It's got a conference table now, if you take that out, put in desk chairs, put in recording equipment. It would satisfy what we understand, what we've been told is a very critical need of the police department. To take a closer look at that, right through this door, going outside and you, I show the terrace here, this, I, uh, labeled C is the terrace. And that door that you're looking at is one that's never used anymore. I think a previous town manager used to go out there and sit on that bench and smoke, but we don't do that anymore. So this, this room, this entrance is right at the very corner of the parking lot. So the police department could unload somebody there, take them in that entrance without ever having to use one of the other entrances. The three other ones, one public one and then the two that employees use. Second thing, this was, this is the one that really blows my mind, that the architect designed this thing with, for through, drive-through traffic so that people, citizens could come not to have access to the building, but to not have access to the building, to drive past the building, drop off their payments. And, but in doing so, they did something I've never seen, I don't think I've ever seen in another bill, in another property, and that is to get in and go out of there, they come in, drive between two rows of parked cars. Then they go past the back of the building and then to exit, they go out through two rows of parked cars. And another bad feature there is, there's just a nice little patio off the lunchroom at the far corner of this building that I hope our staff and police officers are not using because anybody and everybody who drives through that drive-through is within a few feet of where these people would be sitting, taking a lunch break. So that's, um, a situation that raises the question, could that drive-through be closed? Well, back in twenty-ten, everybody paid their bills to the town in check or cash. And they paid property taxes and utility bills as we now do. But, uh, since then, fifteen years since then, Valdez doesn't collect property taxes. The county does that, so you don't pay your property taxes anymore. I would think most people use online banking. I can't even think of the last time I wrote out a check and sent it to pay any bill. But not everybody does that, but no, no matter, uh, there's a box back there, you can bring your envelope and your check and your utility payment, drop it in that drop box that's on back wall, uh, save the postage and you can do it at the last minute, I guess, but, uh, the other thing you could do with that is put a drop box out in front of the building where everybody could drive through without having to drive between two rows of parked cars. And now, now and from now, a couple more years, we have police officers going in and out of the building between here, the building and those cars. And what happens when they get an emergency call, they got to jump in the car and go somewhere? It's, it's a traffic situation and unnecessary danger. So the bonus benefits, if we simply put a wall across this room over here, would be a show where you could put a drop box out in front of the building that people could drive in, drop their payment in a box, not have to come in. If people want to come into the building to pay in cash or to do some other transaction with the cashier's window, that area, that, that driveway area is wide enough, you could put a fifteen-minute temporary parking place there for people to stop and come in and take care of their, their business with the town. But it would, you'd come in, you could come in, go past the drop box, go out, never have to drive past any parked cars. Further, that would free up the, but, but if you stuck a gate at each end of the remaining space back there, it would free up that patio so the staff could use it safely and it would add virtually a true Sally port. Put a gate there, it would have to be a gate that could be opened and closed anyway, but the police could drive in there, close it, unload somebody, bring them into this entrance that I showed a little bit ago. And then it's long enough, it, if they had a gate at each end, you could store two or three impounded vehicles there. So with that, oh, one, one more little thing. I don't know anything about this, except that the manager mentioned at one time, as he said, the police department need a vault. The town hall has a vault, this is the vault, it's twenty by thirteen feet, just off the, uh, finance office in the front of the building. Uh, we looked at it on a tour about a year, a year and a half ago, wasn't very much in it. So if that's a critical need, uh, that would be something for the town manager and the police chief to work out, but I don't know what, it wouldn't cost much to put a wall across that, divide into two rooms, you'd have to add another separate secured entrance for the police department. That's it, uh, I'm leaving this with the manager, staff, future council. And just to summarize what I'm suggesting, as the most important thing to do, the simplest and the quickest, would be put a wall across that room right over there, oh, turn over, put two locks on room B, turn that and the terrace over to the police department. That's it, I mean, I'll take any questions, but I'm, that's, that's the information right there.
Um, it sounds like that you're wanting to put the police department in the town hall and I just want to point out that on December second, twenty-twenty-four, at the council meeting, Councilman Harvey made a motion to ask for an RFQ request for a quote for the cost of expanding the town hall to accommodate the police department. This motion was defeated by a three to one vote with council members Ogil, Ward and Lowman voting against it. So this has been discussed before and it was voted down.
This is not, not a proposal at all for a permanent location. This is simply a suggestion to improve the utilization of a big office over here that's only partly available and to help out our police department for a couple of years, they're going to be here for two years anyway, it's nothing to do with this. This is no recommendation on anything permanent. Yeah, I made that motion because I thought we overlooked an opportunity, but that's history. And that's, this is for the future, for the manager, police chief, future council to consider. I think it has a lot of benefits, uh, but, you know, I spent much of my life, my avocation was real estate development and, and renovation, uh, and my day job involved quite a bit of that. So I'm just, I won't have any input after tonight, as I'll confirm again later, but that's it, I'm just throwing that out there.
Anybody have any questions?
Well, you're at, you're putting in a Sally port, that, that's a major thing for a police station, that's, I'm just asking that to, that, we're adding that.
Okay, anybody else?
I just want to, since this is the last meeting with, um, Councilman Harvey, um, I just, just want to say thank you as I.
Say that for the council comment.
Yeah, I will, I would just, I would just like to say I appreciate your ideas that you brought forth in this because we all need to look for ways to save the town and that's looking what you, it looks like what you were doing here is, uh, finding ways, giving us ideas to carry forth, um, if we are looking to save some money in the future. So, thank you.
Okay, item K, approval and budget amendment, fourth of July fireworks.
Yes, I've been asked, uh, to see if council would remove this from the agenda and once the end of the year comes up, we will do one bid budget amendment. This is because of increases that we do not foresee in some of the items that we may face throughout the year. And also it gives us a chance to, uh, uh, reallocate funds if needed.
Okay, council entertain a motion to remove item K from the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just want to thank Manager Herms. We've been telling people, we hired the best town manager in North Carolina and, and that's what town manager does, so thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, anybody else? Those in favor, six and five, saying yes and raising your right hand?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, item K's removed. Town manager support, sir?
Uh, yes, and if I mispronounce any of this, please, uh, please forgive. Uh, yes, and if I mispronounce any of this, please, uh, please forgive me. The Old Colony Players present Nightfall with Edgar Allan Poe, uh, October sixteenth through the nineteenth at seven-thirty at Old Rock School Auditorium. Visit www.OLColonyplayers.com for ticket information. Bluegrass at the Rock, Authentic Unlimited, uh, October the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five at seven-thirty P M. Please visit www.bluegrassattherock.com for ticket information. F V R ten miler, five K, ten K, and one miler trail run will be Saturday, October the eleventh, twenty-twenty-five at eight A M from the parking lot. People really run ten miles?
There's a bear behind me.
Parks and Rec Department is partner, in partnership with North Carolina Wildlife, North Carolina Spinal Cord Energy Association, and Waypoint Avengers, Adventures, uh, will host an adapted hike at Valdez Lakeside Park on Wednesday, October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at ten A M and one, one P M. Equipment will be available for ti-, for participants with mobility needs. Uh, Great Trails State Day Celebration will be at Valdez Lakeside Parking Area Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, all day long. Twilight Tales on the Trail will be held Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, from six to eight P M at the Lakeside Park Pavilion. Treks in the Streets will be Friday, October thirty-first, from four to six P M. Bluegrass at the Rock, Daniel, Groundstaff, and, and the Uptown will be November first from seven-thirty P M. Again, uh, visit bluegrassattherock.com for more ticket information. The Christmas in November Craft and Gift Show at the Old Rock School is scheduled for Friday, November seventh, twenty-twenty-five, from four to eight P M, and Saturday, November eighth, uh, from nine A M to two P M.
Yeah, you can skip.
Yeah. Bring the Rock to Chasing Phoenix. Free concert from Rainout with Family Friday night, Saturday, uh, November fifteenth, uh, at seven-thirty at Old School, Old Rock School Auditorium. And the next, uh, regular scheduled meeting, uh, it will be Monday, November seventeenth, six P M in these cham-, uh, in this council chambers at this town, uh, Valdez Town Hall. Sorry for the long list, but it's a busy time of the year.
Well, I, I would hope our citizens can see what all we have going on and count in many of those events. I encourage, encourage them to do so. Okay, Mayor, council comments. Council, who's first?
I was, I'll, I'll say.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Um, just kind of to expand on Mr. Herms and all those calendar dates. I just wanted to commend the staff for the newsletter that's been in the water bill the last few months. It's very well done. There's, all these dates that Todd just went over are in here, so people should read this. And they should read the mayor's farewell letter very well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was excited about the police department golf tournament that is coming up. So, um, it will benefit the Blue Santa, which is to provide Christmas for underprivileged children in the Valdez area. Great, um, event. So please look to see how you can help support this event.
Okay, anybody else?
I do want to take a minute and say it's been a pleasure working with the mayor and Councilman Harvey. I appreciate both of your, and not all times were our opinions or our thoughts the same, but it is always good to have differences of opinions. If we do not have differences of opinions, it's a really cruddy world, for lack of a better term, to live in. I like a little excitement in, um, getting to see different perspectives, and I appreciate it from both of you. And I, I, I look forward to working with whoever the next council is. Um, and I know we'll probably have the same thing happen with that. You'll have differences of opinions, and you just learn to live with it. But I do want to, um, take a moment, um, on a different note. There was a young man in our community, Calvin Yang, who passed last week. Um, very unfortunate circumstances. He was a, uh, he did go to Drum High School. He worked at McDonald's here in town. If you, um, and this is a personal note for me, if you do have, um, a couple of extra dollars you would like to bless his family with, you can go to, um, the Jethro's Facebook page and find the fundraiser for him. I believe our community needs to pull together for families in moments like this. Um, we're trying to reach ten thousand dollars. He, um, but to, to help the family, it will all go straight to, um, his family. We are doing a candlelight vigil on Wednesday evening at seven-thirty. There's a lot of hurting kids in our community right now, who are dealing with the loss of a friend. So, um, if you have a moment to stop by and, uh, be there for that candlelight vigil Wednesday night, feel free to stop by for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't come to your surprise, but, to surprise you, but, uh, this is my last council meeting, my last, my regular, last regular council meeting, my last opportunity to make clues and comments. So I do have a few. First of all, I want to remind everybody that November fourth is the election, when four, uh, new, four people on the ballot will be elected for, uh, for these six seats up front here that you see. On November five, my intention is to place a call to each of the six people who have filed for election and thank them for being willing to, uh, put their, their, their personality and their efforts and their money out there in, in an effort to serve the town, win or lose, I'm gonna thank them for making that effort. Uh, November seventeen is the next regular council meeting. I will be here to ensure that we have a quorum, so that the new elects can be sworn in appropriately and in accordance with state statutes. First, then, getting to my comments, I want to thank the citizens of Valdez for electing me. It's been an honor to serve our town. It's been an opportunity to, to address strategic planning and looming debt, which were two things that I did, that I addressed in public comments for a few years back, since a few years back. Uh, it was interesting, frustrating, challenging, but rewarding, all rolled up into one. Second, I have a confession to make tonight. There was a mystery at the beginning of December twenty-twenty-three, and it never got resolved. People were wondering, who did this? In fact, the police chief retired at the end of December, and it was, it was still an open case when he retired. Uh, but I confess, I was the one who came in and rearranged the seating for the council. The mayor plaque, which used to be right in the very center, was moved over to where it was designed to be on that side, and that's where it is in most town councils. Uh, the mayor's nameplate was moved up to the very center where the town manager used to sit, and the chairs were pushed together, and we, that's why we have an extra mic up here, because it used to be, right in the very center was the town manager, who participated actively. And on his right was the mayor, who was elected, our elected leader, and on his left was our town council. But, anyway, I did it, so I don't think I broke any laws, but I know a lot of people were wondering, you know, how that happened? That's how it happened. Third, uh, to fulfill a pledge, back in December, when we, when the council authorized a capital fund drive for the pool cover, uh, at that meeting, I donated the, the, uh, my savings, the amount I'd saved on my twenty-twenty-four tax bill from the twenty-twenty-three tax bill. And I also stated I would do the same in twenty-twenty-five. So I want to, I'm gonna leave with Mr. Herms, a check with my, donating my, uh, savings on my, between my twenty-twenty-five tax bill and what it was in twenty-twenty-three. I don't know if we're ever gonna have a fund drive implemented, but, uh, no, no matter, they've already got some money in there. Now they'll have a little bit more. The other thing I'm gonna give Mr. Herms is my copy of Robert Schroll's Simplified, that he can then pass along to the, whoever gets elected as mayor, because I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be an A board role in the future. I don't need to say more, so I'm gonna leave this with Mr. Herms as well. And then, one other thing, I've been poking around, trying to learn what this artificial intelligence is all about. And with the help of Chat G P T, and, and with apologies to Dr. Seuss, uh, I put together a little flyer that describes the twenty-twenty-three election where, uh, Valdez, as I say, it's been two years since it came to be, Valdez heard the who in twenty-twenty-three. So this little flyer, uh, I'll send it to any citizen who asks for it. It's not political. It just explains how we, how we did that last election. And the who, that was Ward, Harvey, and Ogil became a new, uh, town majority, council majority for a little while. And then I took that one step further. I published a book, a Kindle book. And it's also says, Valdez heard the who, and it says, you can ser-, save your town too. The purpose of this is for any other people who feel they need change in their town, they can read the saga of how we did it. But the mo-, the content of this came right out of our town council minutes since last, since December twenty-twenty-three. Kindle will publish anything anybody gives them, uh, but the hooker is, you gotta put a price on it. So I put the lowest possible price. The ebook, the e-version of this is a buck. This one is for something, and any, any and all royalties will be donated to the town anyway. So that's out there. With that, I just want to, uh, make one last pledge, and that is, this is the fifth time I retire, and I want everyone to know, when I retire, I retire. And I will not be back in these council chambers to publicly criticize anybody who wants to run for office. If they're willing to serve the town, God bless them, they won't get criticized by me. I won't be coming back to criticize the, or advise the council for not going it my way. And I will not be coming back to advocate for spending tax dollars for, for my pet desire. So with that, I wish the citizens, the employees, these council members I've served with, and the new council members, all the best.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, council at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into our closed session under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight point eleven A three, to consult with an attorney retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the town attorney and the town council, which privilege is hereby acknowledged.
I shall move.
Okay, second.
Okay. Those in favor, six and five, saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.